The City Council meeting for Monday, October 21st. Today's Pledge of Allegiance is also part of our presentation. So please stand for the presentation of the colors by the Fortuna Police Department Honor Guard, and then Chief Day will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here. Okay, now the rest of our presentation. Chief, would you like to?
Well, thank you, Mayor Trent, and honorable counsel, members of the community. It's never a bad problem to have when we have numerous new programs coming forward from the city and on behalf of the police department is, you know, really just an honor to be able to present something that historically we haven't had within the department before, which is our own Honor Guard and Honor Detail. So we essentially, at this point, have four sworn members. One of our members is on vacation today, so he couldn't be here. But as we work forward with the program, we'll be looking at other officers within the rank and file to get trained up and serve on the team as regulars or alternates. The members of our Honor Guard team received formalized training in Riverside, California, so they were down there with 30 or 40 other agencies from all across the state of California, from top to bottom. And, you know, they got trained up on everything ceremonial, so everything from funerals to parades and, as you saw here today, a demonstration of posting the colors. They really do it all. And so what I've envisioned as the chief is, you know, our ability here within Fortuna to use the Honor Guard for special events and different things that we do within the city, from things like, you know, State of the City to, you know, anything else with civic or service clubs or maybe during the rodeo parade, things like that. So, you know, we all here in Fortuna are very patriotic folks, and this is just an extension of that feeling. And so, again, it's my honor to present the first-ever Fortuna Police Department Honor Guard to the City Council in the city of Fortuna. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. What a nice addition to our department.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is introducing the new police dispatcher.
Thank you again, Mayor Trent and honorable counsel. So this is really one of those awesome hires. I'm proud to introduce Deanna Shaw this afternoon. Deanna grew up in the Merced area, and she started her career in law enforcement in 2000, so she's been doing this just as long as I have. She was originally hired by the Turlock Police Department as an emergency dispatcher, where she worked for 16 years. She also, during that time, she kind of switched gears, and she has five years' experience as a property and evidence specialist. So again, we're just feeling pretty blessed today that we're able to attract and recruit and hire an employee, a staff member of Deanna's experience. So, a little bit about her. She's married to her husband, Michael, for the last 17 years. They have five wonderful children together. They've done some back and forth, just returning recently from the state of Arkansas. They moved there for three and a half years. And during that time, she worked for the city of Barling as a utility billing director. And so I'm sure during that time, she learned something about customer service, and, you know, when you put that together with, you know, almost 20 years collectively of dispatch and evidence experience, it's just a huge commodity for the city and for the police department. And this is the type of staff member, honestly, that we're looking for. So I think she'll be a perfect fit for the city. I think the department and our communications center will learn a lot from Deanna. It's an honor to welcome her to the Fortuna Police Department family, and I think she has a few words for the council today. Welcome.
I just want to thank you guys all for the opportunity to work for the city of Fortuna, and I look forward to having a long career here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Fortuna.
Thank you.
Now, we have an amendment to our agenda.
Yes, Mayor Trent, if we could remove the closed session on today's agenda, that will be brought back at a later date, and that item is number 9A on your agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove item 9A from the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item removed. Okay, now, members of the public may be heard on any item that is not on the current agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and be advised that by law, we cannot act on anything that's not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Come on up and please state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Linda Rasmussen, and I'm here with my friends and colleagues, Mary Jo Casasanta and Karna Hess, and we are here to talk about our Main Street Theater. We're part of the Save Our Fortuna Theater Group, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about it. I'm going to use the three minutes to kind of refresh everybody's mind or minds about the, remind you about the history, tell you who we are, and then what, you know, what our goals are and how I think you can help. If you remember one thing, I think, I'll start and close with this, is that the Fortuna community really cares about the theater. We started maybe at the beginning of the year with a small group. It's really grown, but no one wants to see that building wasted or just go away or fall to disrepair. So a bit of the history is, it was built in 1938, you know, beautiful art deco building, and unfortunately, with the earthquake in December 2022, it was closed. Although, to be fair, there was a little bit more to this because, of course, the three years before, two years before, had been worldwide pandemic closing everything down. And then, before that, theaters had really fallen off, you know, with streaming and renting. So there was kind of a buildup until when that happened, there, at that point, the owner just thought there was no more he could do. So it did close. So our group formed, again, just a small group. You know, we all really care, and we want our theater back, and we created a Facebook page, we created a Facebook chat group, we've got an email, we had a table at the recent Apple Harvest Festival. And this was where we got so many ideas, and I am going to drop off with you a list of all the community's wonderful ideas. And, you know, I didn't filter anything out. Some are very naive and some might be very pie in the sky, but I don't know which one might spark an idea from somebody, so I'm including all of it. We have reached out to the Fortuna leader, some of you here I have met before, the Fortuna Rotary, the owner, Dave Corkhill. The really important was Donnie Minor. He managed the theater for over 20 years. He's been very helpful in pulling this together. And, you know, to let you know too, this is initially just a fact-finding. The community is so supportive, they all want to run out and raise money, but there's really nothing to raise money for until we figure out what's going on. You know, what is the damage? A group one year ago went in and had a look, but never quite put a money tag on that with, by the end of the month, one of the Rotary members is going to go back in with the, with Donnie and have a look and see what is the damage and what will it cost? Because what happened that night of the earthquake is the sprinklers were set off in the main room, and that can't get any better. It's been a year since someone looked, so I'm real curious as to what the damage is and how much that will cost. So the first part is a fact-finding, and, you know, then it's just going to be about what does the owner want, what do we as a community want? You know, I can't see, probably just a straight theater won't work. It will need to be a multi-use kind of building, and people would love that. People just want to see it open again. So really, we just want to impress on you that we're out there, we care about it, and once we get our facts together, we would really like to find a path to reopening. And what that looks like or means, we don't even know at this point, but there's a lot of people out there in the community that are ready to pull together and help make it happen. So, any questions for me?
No.
No? Mayor Trent, may I drop off our information sheet and then the list from the community?
Uh huh, you can drop it off to the city clerk here. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
Good afternoon. Zulong, just wanted to thank Michelle Bushnell for sending Amy Nielsen our way when we needed a city manager, and congratulate the council on making a great choice in picking Amy and welcome, officially welcome her to Fortuna. So I'm super excited that she is here and going to be official now. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
I didn't realize that was on consent. I also just want to congratulate the council on their selection for a city manager and congratulate Amy and know that I'm super thankful that I'll be able to work with her, with the city, and I know that Fortuna will just have a great relationship with Amy and very much flourish under her leadership.
And thank you for your recommendation of her. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, see none, we'll close public comment. And we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have 13 items on the consent calendar, all of our monthly reports, city council minutes, report of dispersments, authorize interim city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with people of new directions for cleanup and outreach service, authorization of destruction of selected Fortuna Police Department files, ratify and approve employment contract for our new city manager and as a start date of November 3rd, 2024, and approve the amended pay sketch, scale. Does anybody want to prove any or pull any?
Couple items, F and H.
F and H, you want to pull any? Okay, go ahead.
Well, these are just a couple of comments, comments and commendations, actually. The F is Parks Department Report, and I just wanted to say that the medians are looking pretty sharp, they've been out there working, and unfortunately, again, there was a lot of vandalism in the monthly report, and I would just ask if anybody sees anybody, anything that looks out of the ordinary to get ahold of the PD, and so we can see about catching some of these vandals. And item H is the Public Works Report, and there's four items on there that caught my attention. The Ninth Street Sewer, the remodel for the Community Development Department in the former police department wing, the Monday Club chimney from leftover, also from the earthquake, and the Carson Woods Water Line. And those are four items that have been loose ends hanging out there, and they're finally moving forward on those. The Ninth Street Sewer is, the sewer line itself is complete, there's a little bit of roadwork to be done. Community Development Office is moving ahead and should be done in early part of November. The Monday Club chimney should be starting to happen any day now, and the Carson Woods Water Line is underway. So a lot of loose ends being tied up, and I just thank the guys for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to?
I make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent calendar passes. Moving on to city council business, our first item of business is conduct a public hearing to review, provide comment, and direct staff on mill districts, specific plan, supplemental environment, environmental impact report, amendments to the general plan and zoning, including implementing Q, qualified zone and design guidelines. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Trent and councilmembers Conley and Johnson. I'm just going to pull up my presentation, and we'll get started. Great, here we go. So, as you mentioned, tonight, we are reviewing a whole bunch of documents related to redevelopment of the former Palco Mill Site. I won't go through each of the items until we get into the presentation a little bit farther. I'm Sheri Meads, I'm your Community Development Director. We have a nice presentation that will hit on a bunch of different topics. We have several presenters this evening that you will meet going through. We have our consultant team. We have Vanessa Blodgett and John Miller from Plan West. We have Brett Vivian from GHD, and then joining us remotely, we have Todd Trigenza also from GHD, who will all take part in the presentation along with my colleague next to me, Brendan. So, city efforts towards redeveloping the Mills, Mill District area date back to at least 2006, when the community recommended and the city council adopted, determined that the former Pacific Lumber Company Mill Site should be redeveloped with a mix of land uses. Through its general plan adoption process in 2010, the city designated a Mill District Focus Area and General Plan Land Use designation, which includes the former mill site and adjoining existing residential, commercial, and industrial uses. The area has been referred to as the Mill District ever since. A former area plan, which was mentioned and referred to in the city's adopted general plan, was never adopted. It was drafted but not adopted as part of the general plan. So, in 2021, acknowledging that the vacant mill site was starting to become a nuisance, there was a lot of trash, things were overgrown, unhoused people were staying there, and recognizing that the then-current owner wasn't doing anything to move the project forward in terms of planning or marketing, improving or developing the site. So then, the city decided, self-initiated, the Mill District Specific Plan Planning Process. With, and then in 2023, two years after that, planning process began, approximately 64 acres of the former mill site area were sold to a developer actively marketing the site as the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. And as envisioned in the specific plan, the Mill District area, notably the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center, will transform the city's most underutilized area into an important hub for economic employment, tourism, and residential development. So in front of you now is a bit of an agenda of how this presentation will go. I gave a little bit of a background, our consultant team will probably go into it a little deeper. We're going to cover the general plan amendments that are required to implement the specific plan, other related general plan amendments, the organization and overview of the plan itself, the environmental documents that were prepared for the Mill District Specific Plan. We'll talk about what happened when we went to the Planning Commission, and then what happens after this meeting. So as you can see on this slide, and this starts in January of 2024, because that's when I started, so I'm very familiar with this part of it, but there was obviously since 2021, a lot of analysis and initial planning work to get the process underway. In January, we brought to the Planning Commission an update, and then in May, we released the initial Mill District Specific Plan draft. We released the draft supplemental EIR in August. We just recently went to Planning Commission on the documents, and they recommended council approval. The public comment period on the EIR ended on October 15th. You'll hear a little bit more about that. And here we are today with the City Council public hearing. There is still work to be done. In November, the final EIR in response, with response to comments, will be prepared and distributed. We'll have the actual first reading of the documents, where you will take action on them on December 2nd, and then the second reading, certify the final EIR, and adopt all of the documents. So today is sort of a pre-adoption meeting, it's an optional public hearing, just to get the information out before you, and let us know if there's anything that you already know that you're going to want to see changed in the document, to save time when that December 2nd meeting comes around, so we're not sitting here till midnight, hopefully. So now I'm going to turn it over to Plan West and Vanessa Blodgett.
Thanks for having me. I'm Vanessa Blodgett with Plan West, and I have with me John Miller. And Sheri did cover some of what we'll go into, but I will keep it pretty brief, too. So what is the Mill District? The Mill District is a focus area that's mapped in the current general plan for the city, and the site was the former site of a lumber mill, closed in 2004, or closed before that, but then in 2004, the city initiated the general plan process, and part of that process was looking at the Mill District as a focus area. There was a draft plan prepared at that time that was not adopted, and so now we are reviewing those policies and guidelines and updating them for the current, current situation and current needs and vision of the city and the residents. And, where do I point this? Oops. So this is current land use and zoning map, so just existing conditions. The site is designated Mill District, and the Mill District Area Plan and General Plan Policies did call for some detailed planning that we're doing in the Mill District area to ensure compatible uses, promote community activity, preserve open space, and provide safe and convenient street system that provides for balanced transportation systems. And the zoning, though, was never updated, so it is still designated and zoned, heavy industrial, so there is, that is just not consistent, the land use and zoning, so part of this process will bring those into consistency. And, so the planning process to date since 2021, it was funded originally by a grant from the Community, California Department of Housing and Community Development, LEAP, Local Early Regional Action Planning. And so we started this process through that grant. It was supplemented by Headwaters Funding and to do some special studies, including utility and infrastructure studies, water, wastewater, stormwater, traffic. We also have done some stakeholder outreach, and we've also met with a few of the agencies, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, PG&E, and some other stakeholders as well. The funding has also been supplemented by the city and the current property owner to do some more floodplain and drainage analysis and look at the sequoia considerations related to that. And so a specific plan. A specific plan is a regulated California planning document. It's adopted by the city to implement a particular vision for a defined area, in this case, the Mill District. These types of plans are generally used in areas marked for redevelopment, and include guidelines, goals, policies, and implementation strategies to guide public imprisonment in a coordinated manner. The specific plan, it must include land use policies and maps regarding distribution, location, and extent of the land uses, development standards, the location and components of needed public and private infrastructure improvements, and then implementing actions, including financing, financing programs necessary to carry out the plan. The specific plan must also be consistent with the rest of the general plan. Now I am going to turn it over to John to get into some of the details of the proposed general plan amendments.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name's John Miller. So the general plan needs, the general plan land use element needs to be modified to reflect the changes in the vision for the Mill District. And first, so the Mill District Focus Area Policies are within the land use element, and the first change is to allow a diverse range of industrial uses rather than what was called compatible light industrial uses. It wasn't defined anywhere in the general, general plan, and the city has recognized the need for additional industrial space within the city. The site's been used for industrial space, and site conditions in some areas limit the range of possible uses to only industrial uses until comprehensive environmental cleanup occurs. It may occur, but in the event that it doesn't, industrial is, is really the only allowable use. So the, the change is to the Mill District land use designation, to allow a range of industrial uses, and the policies that relate to compatible uses within the Mill District Focus Area to, to, to reiterate that a range of industrial uses are allowed, and compatibility with other uses, because residential uses and a range of commercial uses are also allowed. So policies and performance measures within the plan that assure compatibility are also necessary. The next change within the Mill District Focus Area Policies is allowing development within the 100-year floodplain. And the, there's a policy, I think it's called Open Space and Floodplain, prohibits development within the 100-year floodplain. And this is really the only area in the city that's planned for development, where development isn't allowed in the 100-year floodplain. The, I think it's called the Health and Safety Element, and the zoning regulations have policies and procedures and, and measures that allow for development to occur within the 100-year floodplain, and you see it throughout the city and in cities throughout the state. It's, it is an allowable thing, as, as long as the measures are in place to ensure that it doesn't exacerbate flooding or that the, the building and the occupants, occupants aren't subject to flooding hazards. So that, the change would be to allow development within the 100-year floodplain. The, oh, I guess, forgive me. This, this map shows the 100-year floodplain within the Mill District, and it shows the 100-year floodplain within the, the Riverwalk area, and you can see there's a lot of building footprints underneath the, the 100-year floodplain, and all of those were built consistent with, with city flood, flood management-related policies. The, the other changes within the Mill District relate to the Newburgh and Kenmar roundabouts, and integrating the roundabout planning with the planning for the Mill District, and facilitating the development of some adjacent land that's been planned and zoned for residential uses for a long time, which is right adjacent to the Mill District area and is subject to some drainage, poor drainage, and some flooding that could be addressed through drainage facilities within the Mill District. And so to enable the development of these areas, these areas were integrated into the, the Mill District Specific Plan. Other land use element changes, including amending the land use map. The, the area that contains Sequoia gas on the other side of the railroad right-of-way is planned and zoned for heavy commercial, industrial-related uses. That area is being incorporated into the Mill District to allow the same flexibility in the range of uses there, and to integrate it into the planning for the inter- in the range of uses there and to integrate it into the planning for the interchanges and providing adequate access. There's some areas in the south near, on the east side of Strong's and Mill Creek that's planned, Mill District, that's really not a part of the Mill District. The property is probably inadvertent, so it'd be removing that from the Mill District area. And then the last land use element change relates to industrial and commercial caps. The land use element under the commercial grouping and under the industrial grouping applies caps. And you'll see on the right-hand side of this slide, these are square footage caps. And for the commercial, they're allocated by general plan land use designation, Commercial Office, Central Business District, Fortuna, the commercial mixed use along Fortuna Boulevard to the Mill District, to the Riverwalk area. And within the industrial cap, they're applied to specific areas within the city. And it limits the total square footage, and it limits the square footage that can be developed in any of those areas or with any of those land use designations. And it appears that the purpose was to protect against blight, which was the term that was used when the general plan was adopted, and now they use the term urban decay. And it's where buildings become unoccupied, and they basically result in significant environmental effects within the community. And so these caps were proposed as a way to limit the likelihood that urban decay would occur. So rather than eliminate the caps, what's proposed is to replace them with an ongoing monitoring and reporting program. Right now, the square footage is tracked, and I guess the assumption is until you get to 100%, then there's, no action is taken. So rather than that, it's to say what are, how much development has occurred? What is the effect of that development on other areas? What's the vacancy? What's the, what buildings are vacant? What are the, how is it affecting those communities? There's coordinating with the owners of the larger commercial properties, coordinating with the various business groups, and then reporting to the council and the Planning Commission as part of the annual, the general plan annual report. And if there's some action that needs being taken, that the action is discussed. And then in the coming months, staff brings forward actions rather than a passive program of just tracking square footage, and then once you get to 100%, then figuring out what next to do. So this is an active versus a passive program. The specific plan is organized, has background, you know, describes the vision for the area, has a chapter that focuses on land use, open space, and design. And so it has policy, goals and policies regarding open space, you know, facilitating a broad range of uses, encouraging economic development, compatibility between uses, has policies relating to open space, which are protection of the Strong's and Mill Creek riparian areas. And then it sets up a really comprehensive set of design guidelines, has a chapter that describes the circulation plan for the area, the onsite and offsite circulation, infrastructure needs, water, wastewater, sewer drainage, has a chapter that sets up the, how the infrastructure needs will be financed over time, and then talks about the Mill District in relation to other city documents. This slide and the next slide are just sort of, this is the concept layout that was submitted by the property owner. This concept layout was used as a proxy for what development could be in evaluating infrastructure needs and, you know, to help with the environmental impact report. This is the north side, which is larger, more industrial-like buildings in the center with more commercial-like buildings towards the edges near the main street. This is the southern area showing the protected riparian area and more highway-oriented commercial uses in the south. As I was describing, the goals and policies of the plan allow for a mixture of uses. And in spite of the conceptual development plan, there is no project that's proposed as part of the plan or that was evaluated in the EIR. It's, the land use designation serves as a sideboard. It could be all residential, it could be all industrial, it could be a mixture there, commercial as well. The focus is compatibility between uses, protection of Strong's Creek, complete streets, and infrastructure, time to support development. Do I continue? Okay. So I'm going to pass.
Thank you, John. Great job. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the next few slides, which are the design guidelines. And the purpose of the design guidelines is to provide a clear set of design policies and give certainty to project sponsors such as developers, property owners, architects, designers, and public agencies, including city projects. These are the primary design criteria that the city staff and review authorities will use to evaluate project proposals. Good architecture plays a crucial role in building communities. Thoughtfully designed areas address the efficient flow of people, goods, and services, aesthetics, and the opportunity to foster social interaction and create a sense of belonging. Good architecture can have a positive impact on the economy. Well-designed buildings and infrastructure attract businesses, investors, and residents, driving economic growth and development. So it's not often that, once a city is relatively built, that you have such an opportunity to design how to best implement an area of the city, especially one that's important. So we wanted to consider things that would not only make the site efficient and functional for industrial and manufacturing-type of uses, but, you know, there could be residential, there could be retail, and things like that. So we wanted to create some type of a comprehensive palette to give cohesiveness to the overall project in addition to the individual projects. So as you can see, some of the things we're trying to do is prevent just long stretches of flat buildings, if you will. Ensure that walkways are safe and comfortable between public sidewalks to the front entrance of a building, from public transit to a building, that type of thing. As you can see, pretty much most building materials can, would be included, and residential includes even more. And we really encourage the mixing and matching of textures to help create visual interest in the buildings. And so it's really important how the site is laid out, since there could be residential next to noise-generating types of uses. We request that things be separated by, you know, certain buffers and that type of thing. We're trying to make sure that vehicles of all different types are going to be safely maneuvered through the site. And as you can see, it's comprehensive, but hopefully it all makes sense. There are landscape requirements. Part of that is, as I mentioned, is a noise attenuation and also as a visual attenuation. It's also intended to improve the aesthetics of the area and prevent any type of, you know, heat island effect that isn't a huge deal here, but it's still, as, you know, the climate changes, could become that. So that's really it for the design guidelines. Like I said, we're trying to consider the fact that we have this beautiful, underutilized space that we can turn into something special that the community can be proud of, but that's also very functional for the type of uses that are allowed. So now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Brendan.
Thank you, Sheri. Good afternoon, Council. So I am here to present the next five slides, which discuss the utility and infrastructure and some preliminary infrastructure financing as part of the Mill District specific plan. And I'd like to start out with water. So what you'll see here on the right is the concept level map that was included in the specific plan. And what's shown are two key pieces of information in there. In the black lines with little crosses in them, you'll see what the existing water infrastructure is in there. And in the green, you'll see the proposed. So, big picture, the city of Fortuna grew up around the former Palco Mill Site, and as such, the water system is very tied together, the city's water system, with the Mill Site and how it was laid out at that time. With that, though, it's an aging area of our utility system. It has water lines located, of course, in all the wrong places, and there's ultimately a lot of upgrades that need to happen out there. So what we found as part of the preliminary utility analysis for the water system is that the strategy with the Mill Site's development is to remove all of the old, aging, and undersized water infrastructure that is currently traversing the site and to replace it all with new, modern materials that are located in the access roads that are laid out as part of the Mill Site's development. As such, and with that, we also need to, while moving where the water connects, make sure it connects to all those same key places, because those connections to the greater city are one of the major reasons we're able to provide municipal potable water and fire flow service. So we're going to maintain our key infrastructure tie-in points at Newburgh Road, Highway 101, and Third Avenue, as well as add another interconnection point at South Fortuna Boulevard, kind of by the Hot Brew Shopping Center there. Big picture for the water system findings, insofar as how they were analyzed in the specific plan and in the EIR update, is that the increase in development that we're talking about as part of the Mill Site specific plan, we still anticipate that the city and the planning horizon would have adequate water, both source and storage, to serve for development of the Mill Site, and that with the upgrades that are proposed, the city water system could provide between 4,000 and 4,500 gallons per minute of fire flow, which is largely the measurement realistically that you look for in developing a site for this use. Moving from there, now we go to our sewer system. So unlike water, where we have a lot of infrastructure out there, what's interesting is for 75-ish acres of that site, there's almost no sewer infrastructure. And why would there really need to be? I suppose it was a former mill site and log pond and other such things. So with that, the strategy here would be to install all-new sewer infrastructure, co-located again in the access roads, public and private, that would be located throughout the development of the site. Those would be installed in gravity situations to the extent practicable, but it's likely a few sanitary sewer lift stations would be required, certainly one down in the lower floodplain area off of Kenmore Road, and then potentially, depending on final design and/or utility conflicts, one up near Newburgh Road as well. Any lift stations done as part of the project would be through assessment benefits as part of the development of the Mill Site. The city would ultimately take on the long-term maintenance and upgrades with those assessment benefit districts, however. Big picture findings on the sewer system is buildout of the Mill District site. We have plenty of capacity at the city's existing wastewater treatment plant to treat the effluent that would be generated as part of the uses there. We have suitable capacity in our Strong's Creek line to deliver that. We do have some capacity issues in the Newburgh 12th Street Lonnie Drive area. Those have been identified, and there would be some upgrades required in order to do buildout for uses that want to send their wastewater up to that section of the city system. I will note, this is an issue we're working on outside of the specific plan and is one that we are working towards correcting. It's just worth noting, as part of the development of that northern portion of the site, that infrastructure improvement would be critical to allowing for the buildout up there. Moving on to drainage. Drainage is an interesting one. So similar to water, there's a lot of existing drainage infrastructure that's tied into the site. Most of it's in the wrong place or it's undersized, so a lot of it would have to be removed and replaced with modern materials located relative to the new building footprints that would be part of any development, and that would be the requirement in this case. In today's world, drainage is mostly managed onsite by the developers, and as such, most of the infrastructure and onsite retention, detention-type basins installed would be part of an individual developer's project. But the other things they will be asked to do as part of the specific plan is to service existing drainage patterns. So South 15th, South 16th, First, Second, and Third Avenue, those neighborhoods all have portions that actually rely on the Mill Site and the Mill Site's infrastructure for their own drainage, and it would be a requirement of development to keep those flow paths alive and to size any new infrastructure and design it in such a way to where it can continue to take on that drainage and also take on that drainage as those areas potentially develop, as some of those other parcels do have development potential. And lastly, this is kind of the big one. Apologies for how much information's on the slide, but it's important to get it all through here, and that is the circulation/transportation piece. So of course, maybe the most difficult thing in developing the Mill Site that it has faced through time and it will continue to in the future is how you bring the street network into the site and how you reconcile a bunch of otherwise interesting intersections that surround the site in an area where ultimately you'd want to do developments that generate more traffic. So, big picture, what staff are viewing right now and as part of the specific plan is installing as part of the development, a new public-through-street that would connect from Newburgh Road in and around the Sunnybrook neighborhood down to South Fortuna Boulevard, coming out to a new controlled intersection there near Hot Brew, McDonald's, that area like that. That would be a public road. It'd have curb gutter and sidewalk. It'd have connections that would go to the future Great Redwood Trail, and it would also provide for two other key areas of access we're looking for. One is a new connection to Pond Street, which are the current Sequoia gas properties that are accessed generally off the northbound off-ramp. As part of our interchange improvement project, we've identified the need to get another Pond Street connection out somewhere else. And so that's one of the opportunities we see with a new access road through the Mill Site is the ability to take Pond Street out onto this other road, the other being maintaining emergency access and parcel access through a smaller private road that would go back into the Third Street, or Third Avenue neighborhood, I should say. This is an area where we have utilities. There's some other properties that need access ultimately. We need to maintain emergency access to the back of Third Avenue, which is something we have now. So again, similar to some of the water constraints that we're facing, just trying to make sure that we ultimately maintain that level of access and level of service that we have now in those neighborhoods that are adjacent to the Mill Site. Other big things that we're finding as far as the buildout of the Mill Site is, one thing that keeps coming up is it's become very clear and continues to be so that the improvement of the city's 12th Street and Kenmore Interchanges would be pretty crucial in order for the site to be built out as it's envisioned in the specific plan and in the specific plan EIR. And in addition to that, the, there's a couple other intersections in town. I'm sure we've all experienced, you know, sometimes the bottlenecking that happens at South Fortuna Boulevard and Ross Hill Road, and to a lesser extent, South Fortuna Boulevard and Newburgh Road. So it has been identified that some minor improvements would be required there in order to accommodate the traffic generation as part of the Mill Site project, as it has been analyzed as part of this effort. So lastly, I just want to touch on infrastructure financing. So Section 5 of the specific plan does touch generally on financing for the off-site infrastructure improvement. So there's two main areas that infrastructure would be installed as part of development of the property, and that's what we would call onsite versus offsite. So onsite is anything happening within the boundaries of the site for the use of the development itself. That'd be the internal access roads, the internal utilities, all things that would be required for them to have ingress, egress utilities. That cost would be borne by the developer as they do individual projects on their site. And then there's a number of projects that we've identified as those, as the Mill Site develops, that would require improvements in other offsite areas of town. That would be the city's interchanges. That would be the sewer capacity issues that I noted a moment ago, and that'd be a few of the other intersections that I noted would need some improvements in order to keep those operating suitably. So the financing plan, at a very high level, walks through what some of the financing options would be. It walks through which of those offsite improvements would be subject to some level of project in the future. It gives kind of a high-level evaluation of what the proportional impact is between the development of the Mill Site on that infrastructure versus the greater development of the rest of the city, because of course, development in other areas of the city are going to impact those pieces of infrastructure as well. And then lastly, kind of a little bit of a literature review on what some options are that the city has to explore, be it an E-FID or a tax measure or any other thing that the city could do in order to help recoup cost and move those projects forward. But the big picture takeaway from it is, you know, that problem is not solved in this plan. plan. It is kind of reviewed. A next step after the specific plan process would be for the city or the council to consider establishing either a uniform development impact fee to assess impacts as part of the incremental development of the site or to develop a uniform approach for assessing impacts in an ad hoc development agreement. Because of course, as individual projects come along, if we didn't have a uniform impact fee, we'd still want a uniform approach that the city was taking for assessing those types of impacts with development projects. So, with that, I will turn it back over to...
I'll take it if you want, John, but it is you.
Want to go for that? This is...
Okay. So, part of any specific plan or planning document is implementation. And so, as mentioned, we've developed performance standards that will be specific development criteria that applies to both things that are permitted by right, which is called a ministerial approval, and discretionary development, which means it needs to go to Planning Commission and/or potentially City Council. And all of these things listed here are the topics that have performance standards attached to them. Zoning, you have a separate document that has the proposed Q-qualified zone and the uses that are allowed by right prohibited or require a use permit. As you look through those uses, you'll see that we're really trying to accommodate all different types of development to make it a really robust and vibrant center for commercial, residential, industrial, manufacturing, whatever the market bears, whatever people want to do, we want to accommodate it and make Fortuna the best possible. Infrastructure financing, as mentioned, has its own separate chapter. Brendan covered that pretty well, actually covered it really well. And then, if you have any additional questions, our lovely city manager can address the enhanced infrastructure financing district that could be used, but you guys will discuss that probably on a separate timeline. Next, we'll go to John with Plan West, who's going to walk us through the environmental document that was prepared and what comes next.
A draft environmental impact report was released on August 30th and it's available on the city website. It's also available on SequaNet. Forty-five day comment period was, began on that date and ended on October 15th. During that period, two comment letters were received, one from an attorney in Southern California representing an environmental group and another from the Great Redwood Trail Authority, I believe is... So, the next step in the process is for a final environmental impact to be prepared that contains all of the comments received and provides responses to those comments and makes any needed revisions or corrections to the environmental impact report. The final impact, the FEIR, will be available to your council and 10 days prior, it'll be sent to the entities that commented and be made available to the public so that anyone wanting to address it can do so at your next hearing. So, this is a supplemental environmental impact report, the Mill District focus area, what was originally intended to be an area plan for the Mill District, the land use designation, the policies, the scope of what might occur there is all a part of the general plan. It was evaluated as part of the general plan, EIR. And so, a supplemental EIR allows the city to just evaluate the changes from the plan that was considered in the prior EIR. And the general plan EIR was certified in 2010. So, it was considered as part of the prior EIR. It was the Mill District was called out specifically in some areas of the EIR and considered generally in other areas. And so, a supplement has been prepared to evaluate the significant changes from the prior document. Most of the Sequa impact topics were determined to result in no substantial change. So, even things such as water supply, wastewater, storm drainage, there are technical reports prepared for those and those technical reports evaluated the impacts on the rest of the infrastructure system and those were, the, those systems weren't, were determined not to result in impacts to the rest of the system and basically occur in a manner that was anticipated as part of the original general plan. So, no additional environmental analysis were done for topics like that. The topics where changes to the existing general plan were determined to have occurred were in land use and economic impacts. There's the change in allowing a range of industrial uses, allowing development within the 100-year floodplain and the removal of the industrial, or the modifications to the industrial and the commercial use caps. Those triggered additional review in the land use and economics, economic impact section. The vehicle miles traveled wasn't a Sequa topic in 2010. It is one now and it's a really important topic. So, doing the VMT analysis as part of this was important. Tribal cultural resources is the same. It was not, cultural resources was the topic. Now, there's a strong emphasis on tribal cultural resources and consultation with Native American tribes, so that was done as part of this project. The change from the 100-year floodplain being called open space was evaluated and the potential flooding-related impacts. And all of the, for all of those topics, impacts were determined to be less than significant. And at this point, I'm going to pass it along to GHD and Todd, if he's available.
Thank you, John. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah. So, my name's Todd Reganza. I'm with GHD and I'll be talking a bit about the transportation analysis that was done for Sequa. As John mentioned, this was one of the sections that had to be updated due to the fact that SB 743, which was passed in 2013 but became, was implemented statewide in 2020, was a new type of analysis that we needed to look at. And specifically, what SB 743 does is it eliminates vehicle delay as an impact criteria under Sequa and suggests the use of vehicle miles traveled as the criteria for transportation impacts. And several advisory documents have been published by the state, in particular from OPR, Office of Planning and Research, as well as some from Caltrans. And they suggest various approaches to tackling this as it is something new still, notwithstanding how long ago the bill was passed, new still to many cities and counties in the state. The county, I will note, is working on a regional climate action plan that will address VMT. However, at the time of preparing the analysis for this project, there was no regional threshold set and so, we had to develop one in order to analyze the Mill District specific plan. Next slide, please. So, what did we do? Well, first, and first of all, we looked at the travel demand model and the travel demand model for the county, in particular outside of Eureka, is a bit of a challenge to work with. It doesn't include a lot of detail and on either land use or transportation network outside of the Eureka area. And so, we knew we could use methodology that we'd used elsewhere in Humboldt County for this project. And this project really addresses the key criteria that were set forth in 743, which are to promote land use diversity, a reduction in greenhouse gases and the creation of multimodal networks. So, the methodology we developed is based on looking at the characteristics of what is being proposed from a demographic and transportation perspective, relying primarily on the demographics, the households, the jobs and the diversity and density of those. So, are you placing, are you co-locating jobs near where people live? Are you incentivizing active transportation or non-automobile trips through the creation of multimodal networks? And are you centrally located? So, we aggregated all these scores, the details of which are recorded in the transportation analysis that accompanied the EIR and you come up with a regional average, a regional baseline, as you'll see on the next slide. So, if we set an ideal score as one that is entirely based, you know, maximizes the smart growth potential, minimizes VMT at 100, what we found is today in Humboldt County, the countywide average is 74.3. And what SB 743 wants us to do is improve on the average, improve on the baseline, acknowledging the fact that we have to, you know, improve our efficiency, reduce greenhouse gases relative to the baseline in order to meet the state's climate goals. So, acknowledging that baseline of 74.3 for the county, we can then derive a required score for any project, any city to improve by an acceptable threshold. And we set that threshold at 4% improvement. And that 4% improvement came from the carb scoping plan. It was actually for Shasta County because Humboldt County is not in an MPO and so, it doesn't have a bespoke reduction target, but the most proximate MPO in the area that is most similar to the area would be Shasta and it being more rural and up north and it set its threshold at 4%. So, there's no statewide requirement to go to 15%, which is a term that gets thrown around a lot. And so, we, as the city has the purview to do, set the threshold at 4%. So, therefore, the required score would be 75.33. And there's a lot of math behind all of these equations. I can certainly go into any more details if you have any questions about it, but essentially, that would be the number we're looking for after we implement the project in the city of Fortuna. The city of Fortuna has about an average score relative to the county in terms of its potential to reduce VMT. And when we add the Mill District specific plan, we're adding a lot of jobs. And today, Fortuna exports jobs, so most people commute out and work elsewhere. With the Mill District specific plan, land use that we analyzed, which again, is subject to change depending on what the actual project is, but when we analyze the land uses included in the EIR, we introduced a lot of jobs and improved the citywide score, but we in fact, added more jobs than could be reasonably satisfied by the residents of Fortuna. And so, while the score increases to 75.1, it doesn't quite get to that regional threshold. So, at the end of the day, the Mill District specific plan, based on our analysis, improves the city's growth, the smart growth score and we can then make a statement that it reduces, it will reduce VMT, but it doesn't quite get to the standard which was set for the regional targets. Some mitigations, again, mitigating VMT is a lot more complex and subtle than mitigating level of service impacts, which really requires infrastructure improvements. So, the mitigations included policies that were included in the land use element as well as a discussion of future potential strategies that the city could utilize to make sure that jobs and housing are balanced and located proximate to each other. Ultimately, we found that the impact was significant and unavoidable.
Thanks, Todd, for that. And I misspoke earlier when I said that all of the impacts were reduced to less than significant levels. Clearly, VMT would be significant, unavoidable. Four or five additional policies would be added to mostly the land use element and to the Mill District specific plan that are addressing the diversity of uses and then long-range transportation-related planning that the city was likely involved in anyway. As I said earlier, two comments were received during the public comment period. None have been received since. One from the Great Redwood Trail Agency pointing out what they would like to be corrected or changed within the specific plan and the EIR and the description of the Great Redwood Trail. And then, another very long comment from this great Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance, pointing out what they believe are deficiencies in the environmental review and topics where impacts should be addressed through mitigation. So, the staff will respond to these comments as part of the preparation of the final impact report that'll be brought back to your council.
Back to me again. So, on September 24th, we brought this same presentation and documents to the Planning Commission, who by resolution, recommended that City Council approve the proposed general plan amendments, plan, the Mill District specific plan itself, the design guidelines and the implementing Q-qualified zone, which requires zoning text amendments. So, this is a tentative schedule, really hoping to keep to it. Tonight, this afternoon, we're asking that you have reviewed and consider the draft documents and provide any direction to staff that you would like to see brought forward on December 2nd in our next public hearing, which will actually be an official public hearing and first reading. And then, obviously, after that one, two weeks later, we'll do the second reading and certify the Sequa document and adopt and amend as noted on the slide. So, as mentioned earlier, we have a strong bench here to answer any questions that you may have. Please feel free to give us any feedback, direct us on any things you'd like to see changed, beefed up, anything like that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Just a couple of things. I think Brendan addressed part of it regarding Spring Street, First, Second and Third and how they interface with the Mill District or Fortuna Mill Commerce Center proposed and especially looking at Third Street. I mean, it's really narrow and how that's going to work as well as Spring Street itself is narrow and it would not necessarily be an access point. And I think you, could you speak to that again?
Yeah. And thank you for the question, Councilmember Johnson. So, it's interesting, you sit down and you look at a map and it seems to make really great sense at face value that is part of the development of the mill site area that you would take it as an opportunity to join a lot of these streets together in an overall transportation network. And that's certainly something we considered early on at the staff level. The things that we ran into in the early planning processes were twofold. One, with the number of streets that we have there, trying to join them all together really limited the potential of the mill site as far as having some larger developments be able to go in. Because as you start to connect that network of north, north-south and east-west streets, it, you know, creates a bunch of small residential blocks essentially. In addition to that, a lot of those neighborhoods have smaller than standard right-aways. They have 40-foot right-aways instead of a standard 50. And so, they're exceedingly narrow as it is and the thing we also want to be cognizant of as the mill site develops is not putting additional traffic in those smaller residential neighborhoods that already have relatively congested streets when residents are parking there. So, the approach we took is to leave South 15th, South 16th, First and Second Avenue as they are, where right now, they kind of dead-end into other parcels that are otherwise developable. Those ones with that, that could reconcile any turnaround or other issues for access. We are, we have in the specific plan, the desire and the need to maintain emergency access to Third Avenue because that one has a longer road, it has more homes on it, it's more narrow and more difficult. Right now, it ends in a gate, the right-away does, into the mill site. So, what we'd like to see and is part of the document is that we carry a smaller private roadway through there to where we could maintain emergency-only access and utility corridor access, among other things, to the back of Third Avenue.
Thank you. One other thing to note on that also that came into my mind when you were talking about the drainage. That is surface drainage from Third all the way down to a small... That is surface drainage from Third all the way down to a small inlet on, by First Street, and then a very flat, shallow pipe that goes from there all the way out to Newburgh. So it's not a, not a good place unless you're going to carry water from there through someplace else.
Yeah. We evaluated the bucket brigade, but that idea got shot out pretty quick. And that is one of those areas, as I noted, in the drainage. There are a number of properties there that do rely on traversing the grades of the mill site for their drainage, be it today or in a developed condition. And as such, one of the policies in the specific plan would be that any development would maintain those drainage patterns. And again, size any infrastructure improvements to facilitate the development of those upstream parcels. They would be subject to a buyback agreement if that was deemed necessary due to infrastructure size. But we really want to make sure that we're not putting in something that creates, you know, more of a burden. We want to open up opportunities in the area as opposed to, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, mine, my lack of knowledge, but large industrial, all these zoning terms that go out there, can we like break that down in layman's terms of what might actually, types of businesses that could go there or can't go there? I don't really know who's the best person to answer that, but...
It could range from multifamily to the types of commercial uses that you see on Fortuna Boulevard and in other commercial areas. The light industrial that you see on south of Main Street over on the west side of town to heavier industrial. Could be a transportation-related industrial use, could be a small light manufacturing. I think that some of the original industrial concepts were sort of larger, pre-engineered buildings that contained three or 5,000 square foot spaces that cabinet makers, contractors could use, so, you know, sort of multi-tenant industrial space. So it could be any of that.
Thank you, perfect.
It could also, just to add on to that, civic uses could be allowed. We could build a new city hall there if we wanted to. Anything governmental, maker's spaces, live-work units where there's, you know, a maker's unit below, residential above. A lot of what you see on Main Street where there is commercial and retail below and residential above, all of that type of stuff. We're trying not to limit it at all, so...
Perfect. That was my only question.
Okay, we'll open and conduct an optional public hearing to receive all written and verbal testimony regarding the Mills District specific plan supplemental environment impact report. Amendments to the general plan and zoning, including the implementation of Q and Q zone and design guidelines. Do we have any public comment?
Hi, Sue Long again. Ron and I own about seven acres, which is roughly 10% of this area. And so my concern is the private road that was shown in front of our property. And I apologize for not catching that during the Planning Commission presentation. But when I think of a private road, I think of property owners only use private roads. And this is situated such that all businesses that come into that area, all their employees, all their customers, all their truck traffic, all their deliveries, members of the public, everyone can use that private road. So I have some concerns about us being responsible for maintaining a road that can be used by a whole lot more people than just our business.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. You're asking for just feedback or what?
Yes, we're asking for your comments and feedback, and then we'll come back to your council on December 2nd.
And you can also choose to redirect the public comment as a question if you would What was just presented by Ms. Long? You could ask staff to respond to that or to be prepared to respond to that in December.
Okay. Can you be prepared to respond to that? Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. So it's a great question. And so it's one of those things we've been thinking about a lot through the development of this plan in general, is what is public and what is private. So an approach we've thought about, and I think would be appropriate in this situation, is to recognize that perhaps in the short term, there isn't a need to have something fully established as public right away. We're even thinking about that in terms of Eel River Road, depending on the types of initial developments that happen. But the approach we're taking on that road, which I think could be very beneficial and make a lot of sense in this road, is to think about it as an irrevocable offer of dedication. That way, in the short term, as things are happening and developing, you know, the folks that are needing it have all the access rights, everything they need to make it, to make it function for their uses in the meantime. And then at such a time when a use comes in that really requires it being a piece of public infrastructure that the public can, that the public can access, that it would be irrevocably offered, and that could be accepted by the city at any time. So that would be kind of a conventional way that we could approach that. And it gets done a lot in just general subdivisions and, that have happened historically throughout the city. So, and it's generally what we're thinking about as what's called the, you know, the new through street, or sometimes in the plan, I think it's referred to as Eel River Road. That's a similar approach that we would take there, so...
Thank you.
I have a question kind of on that. I've, fire department, seen it in years where they have gated type facility, like private roads, but they're fire access roads that are just keyed. So people that either live there and/or fire department have that type of key or code-type system to make it a public access urgency thing. Is that an option too?
It is. And when I say, when I say private, I think like in this case, what we're talking about, it would still be an openly accessible road, just not necessarily a quote-unquote "city street," because it may or may not actually need to be at that, at that initial time. But that's where the irrevocable offer of dedication comes in, where the city could always accept it as a city street if and when it becomes needed at a point where it's more of a piece of public infrastructure. There are areas as part of these development plans, because as you'll see, it has the potential to have much larger uses, where secondary access and other access points is going to have to be incorporated in there. Similar to the point of that, we were just talking about the end of Third Avenue and how that would plumb into, you know, a road in this very area, where you could have, you know, a locked gate or removable bollards or other items in there so that you could maintain emergency access throughout all these developing areas. So, you know, with that, we have overarching goals and policies in the plan that address things broadly, like emergency access. As it comes down to implementing individual projects, those policies would be interpreted and enforced through our entitlement review, our building permit review process, working with the fire chief and others to make sure that those improvements were happening adequately for each project.
Yeah, I just, I can see that road, like especially that South Third area, you'd get a semi-truck going the wrong direction down that thing and they're stuck, so...
Well, thank you for the hours and hours of work you've put into this and lots to think about. So I guess continue working and we'll see you back in December.
Yes, and you're also welcome to send me anything in email in advance of that meeting, smeds@ci.fortuna.ca.us, so that we can come prepared, because it's not a lot of fun for review authorities or staff to try to scramble at the actual hearing dates when the items are being adopted, so, if possible.
Okay. Does that include the public can contact you?
Absolutely. Yep, all the way through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll move on to professional service agreement for a feasibility analyst and the Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District.
Thank you, Mayor Trent, and council members. Before your council today is a professional services agreement for a feasibility analysis for the Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District and a supplemental budget request in the amount of $24,750. On August 19th, the City Council authorized the interim city manager to explore establishing what I like to call an EFIT, because it's less of a mouthful than Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. And upon doing further research, calling contacts of mine and having other conversations with other jurisdictions that have established EFIT, it became apparent that we needed a consultant to help us evaluate boundaries and other strategic considerations, preliminary funding and financing analysis, government, governance implementation roadmap, and then also some city-county meeting workshops. So I did some outreach and contacted three consulting firms and two submitted proposals. And before your council is an agreement with Cosmont Companies, and they have worked locally. They did work with the County of Humboldt and they came highly recommended. And they were also the lowest bid at $24,750, which is also the amount that the supplemental budget request is for. And so, just as a reminder, an enhanced, an EFIT is we take property tax growth from development and we use that property tax growth to finance public infrastructure projects, such as the public infrastructure projects that were just discussed in the mill site specific plan. And so that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I got a couple. One, I like their, one of their opening statements on a different paragraph in their contract. The state leader in financing district evaluation information. Get right to the point. But one thing I was curious of is they were about $15,000 difference in price to the other one. And it's in a small price point. You know, it's like one's 25 plus and the other one's like roughly 40. So I just wondered if you noticed anything in between the two proposals that caught your eye or...
I will say that both proposals were responsive and there is, both proposals were responsive and both proposals had a lot to offer and would contribute to this project. Cosmont definitely has worked on more EFIT projects across the state of California and therefore has probably streamlined the process. And we can use that expertise to our advantage, and hence, that's probably the lower dollar value.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody like to comment on this item?
I was just wondering if the council or the city manager is going to approach the county and try to fight for a higher property tax percentage than what we currently get right now, because we're the lowest city in our county as far as the share. So I don't know what that fight is like, but I think that we need to start it. We need to have that conversation and see if we can get anywhere.
That is actually something that I've been thinking about. Who would that question go to?
That would go to your city manager. And so, yes, on August 19th, I actually, in that presentation, I talked about the fact that they are one of the taxing entities that we would approach for a share of their property tax growth, because the City of Fortuna does receive significantly less property tax than the other cities in the area, even Rio, Dell, Eureka, and Arcata receive between 10 and 11%, and Fortuna only receives 4%. So yes, we would be asking the County of Humboldt to contribute their property tax growth. It would also be to their advantage because of their sales tax measures that reach across the county, and that includes the incorporated cities. So if we were able to increase retail, say in the mill site specific area, they would benefit from that greatly because of their sales tax measures.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have...
I make a motion to authorize interim city manager to sign a professional services agreement for the feasibility analysis for the Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District.
Second.
And the supplemental budget request in the amount of $24,750.
And the supplemental budget request in that amount.
Thank you.
Second again.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, our next item is the City Council of the City of Fortuna publicly supporting California's Proposition 36, Resolution 2024-35. I believe Chief is going to do the staff report on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Trent, honorable counsel. And I just want to start out by saying thank you for the requested agenda item. Some of you either attended or saw the Prop 36 rally about a week ago in, it was held in Eureka, it was facilitated by Sheriff Hansel and the district attorney. I thought it was a really good kind of platform for our elected leadership to help educate county voters on an important piece of legislation. And, you know, I think if the council desires tonight, this is a platform where you can kind of replicate that leadership role and stand united on supporting this particular piece of legislation. So, anecdotally, you know, I've been working in criminal justice for over 25 years and have seen the consequences of decriminalization of Prop 47. Whether intended or unattended, I think it can be argued that the state of California has not benefited from decriminalization in any way. And so, you know, really, under Prop 36, we're looking at more accountability for repeat offenders. We're looking at more stringent consequences for those that are engaged in drug activity or, you know, just repeated offenses and thefts. The police departments, law enforcement, we want to arrest repeat offenders and have them kept in custody. The sheriff wants to keep him in his jail. But until certain laws change, we will continue to operate under, you know, what we have become familiar with since Prop 47's induction in 2014, which is the revolving door syndrome at the jail and offenders being right back out on the street before the ink on the arrest reports has dried. So you have the staff report, and I'm going to kind of minimize my comments and leave it there. With that, staff recommends the council consider publicly supporting Prop 36 in a unified voice, which sends a clear message that the community is in support of helping to strengthen penalties for repeat offenders. And I can take any questions as well.
Council have any questions? Okay, open public hearing. Anybody from the public have anything to say? Sue?
Actually, I came to talk to some, about something that was on the consent calendar. And, is it on? Okay, can you hear me? That was on the consent calendar, but, and I didn't know this was on. I have just one small concern about Prop 36, and that is the effect on homeless people. Because homeless people, have you ever heard this saying, three hots and a cot? For some homeless people, jail is a place to go sleep on a cot and get three meals. Anyway, that was in the past when it was easy to get put in jail. So I'm just, I haven't read my pamphlet yet, so I'm not really sure what I think about 36, but I just wanted to put that into your brains to think about homeless folks as not criminals, but as our very low-income members of society. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I...
One little thing.
What?
One thing I remember reading in, in your staff report and at the rally, was that this is also a pathway to treatment. It's not just a... It's not just a punitive thing, but it provides a pathway to treatment for drug offenders. So yes, there is a penalty component, but rather than going straight to prison, you can go to a drug treatment program. And successfully completing that defers some of the sentence, and it also can improve your life and give you a whole new outlook. So I just wanted to bring that up, and thank you.
I just wanted to say that this is, this is a proposition. I'm on the Public Safety Committee out of Sacramento, and this is one we've been working on for three years. And that was actually one of the amendments that we made to it, was to put in some rehab and rehabilitation into this bill. So that, that has done, it's not completely, you know, what we wanted, but it's, it's a path in the right direction, and I definitely support this. And I feel, I think the council supports this?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-35 and read by title only.
And second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
It's a voice, yeah, it's a roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Okay.
Resolution 2024-35, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, supporting California's proposed Proposition 36, which if passed, would increase the penalty for repeat shoplifters and allow for more stringent consequences to those involved in drug crimes. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Okay, the next item is approve contract with Invoice Cloud and authorization, authorize the interim city manager to execute all applicable documents. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. So before I get into the actual Invoice Cloud, I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of a brief overview of kind of where this came from, and where our water and wastewater customers currently pay and how they get their bills. And so, currently, we have about 4,600 customers in the city of Fortuna that we send monthly water and wastewater bills to. As you can see in these two charts, currently, 70% of our customers either come in person to pay, they pay over the phone, or they send a check in the mail, which requires, all three of those payment types require our front counter staff to interact with the public or take the time to manually input the payment, as opposed to 30% which pay online, and that does not require any staff time. And so, we, we have been trying to get more and more people to pay via our online website. And then the second chart is the method that customers receive their bill. And so, currently, 87% receive their bill in the mail, and only 13% receive their bill through email via e-billing capabilities. And so, this brought up a couple areas of opportunity that our finance staff kind of came across, and that was, the first one was to transition customers to e-billing, which would save about 80 cents per bill in postage, paper folding, and staff time to create that bill. And then the second was to transition customers to auto-pay through our online payment system, and so that would stay, save staff time. And so, staff for the last six months have really been trying to educate and encourage customers who are not on our e-billing system or who don't auto-pay to either sign up for one or either of those services. And while staff have had some success in getting people to sign up, we did receive a number of comments through the last six months from customers on some barriers to kind of the ease in transitioning to those e-billing or auto-pay systems. And so, those three barriers were that the current website was difficult to use and to navigate, and so signing, one of the examples given was that signing up requires your previous bill amount, and so we were receiving a lot of calls on customers requesting what they paid the last time because they couldn't remember, and so some people just gave up without taking that extra step to do that. The second was the current website was not compatible with mobile devices, so we had a lot of customers coming in on certain Android devices that weren't compatible with our current online website. And then we, the current online website only accepted credit cards, so there was no e-check capabilities or any of the other current kind of up-to-date payment options that are out there today. And so, with that, we started exploring other potential payment website, and we came across Invoice Cloud. And so, as I just explained, kind of the barriers to our current website was the login requirements for the last payment, no self-service enrollments, and requires calls to office. And what Invoice Cloud is able to provide is easy access to bills, one-click enrollments for paperless auto-pay, and pay by text, which is, would be a new payment type offered to our customers. One of the other things we really liked about Invoice Cloud was that they're going to, they offer three automated email reminders. Currently, staff make phone calls if customers are past due in order to keep them off the water shut-off list, but that obviously takes considerable amount of staff time to call each and every customer. And so, with these three automated emails, what Invoice Cloud was able to kind of uncover through other entities that they've worked with is that almost 40% of customers don't pay after their, the first email. It takes a second and third attempt to get customers to pay, and so these automated emails help with that process. And then the one that I think we're most excited about is that Invoice Cloud offers a number of different payment options. So they offer e-check, they offer PayPal, Apple Pay, Google Pay, and a number of others that are not supported by our current online payment system. And customers can also sign up to receive a text each month, and they'll receive that text, and they can just click on a link and pay it directly from that link. And so, all of those were benefits that, you know, we came across on the customer side, but there's also, this is kind of a win-win situation where we were also able to negotiate with Invoice Cloud on their processing fees. And so, we would actually be able to represent, we would actually be able to see some savings with Invoice Cloud because they have lower processing fees than the processor that we currently use. And so, there's a couple scenarios here. One of them would be if we were able to transfer 20% of our current customers to paperless and e-check adoption. The city would save about $30,000 a year in printing, postage, and other processing fees. So with that, if council agrees, this would be about a 90 to 100-day implementation period to switch over to the new website. And staff is here to answer any questions, if you have any. Otherwise, staff recommends council approve the contract with Invoice Cloud and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Thank you.
The people that are already on the program, are they going to have to redo it again?
They will have to re-sign up, but one of the services Invoice Cloud offers as part of this is they'll kind of coordinate that effort and make it as easy as possible on our current customers by sending out just an easy step-by-step guide and notifying them that they will be transitioning and how, you know, to take the appropriate steps to transition.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Is there going to be a transition period where they're using both, or is it going to be like a hard date where they'd switches over?
My understanding is there will be a hard date, and so we'll make sure to plan that right kind of after the first of the month, right before the first of the month, so that the new billing cycle takes effect, and they'll, they'll have 30 days before they would receive any kind of late penalties or anything on a typical billing cycle.
Then the only other suggestion I have just from using it myself is if we could get like a single-click button on the front webpage of the website to take you right there instead of clicking through three different things to get there.
Yeah.
We'll open public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment on this item?
Lynda Rasmussen. Just a thought, I am one of the community members that receives the paper bill. What about an incentive to go paperless? Some of my bills, I've seen that, they're like, oh, 5% off if you go-
Can you direct your comment up here to the council?
Okay, all right. Hello, Mayor. Yeah, I, just was, just an idea to maybe have an incentive to go paperless. I know I've, some of my other bills have done that, where they'll say, hey, 5% off if you switch to online and no longer get paper. So just a thought.
Okay. Thank you.
So in trying to streamline and make things better for the city, it seems like it costs the customer more. For instance, the building portal charges you extra if you want to pay online, which is convenient for the city and it's supposed to be streamlining, but I refuse to pay an extra fee to help you guys. So is this water thing, do they have a fee for paying online as well?
If you'd like me to answer that, yeah. So currently, the city absorbs the fee, and if we transition to Invoice Cloud, the city would continue to absorb the fee on all water and wastewater bills. So the customer would not see any additional charge by paying online versus paying in person.
Thank you.
So there is an incentive, and you can do it, but you don't have to pay for the processing fee. The city will absorb it.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I make a motion to approve contract with Invoice Cloud and authorize the interim city manager to execute all applicable documents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And our last item of business is discuss and direct, and discuss and direction regarding the city council policy and procedure manual, and appoint two council members to a policy and procedure manual review ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mayor Trent, and council members. At the September 17th meeting during the future agenda item discussion, council member Mobley requested that the city of Fortuna's city council policies and procedures be updated. And the last update of the city council's policies and procedures was June 20th of 2011, so this manual has not been updated in over 13 years. And because it's been so long, it seems prudent to appoint two council members to a policies and procedure, policies and procedures manual review ad hoc committee to review the current manual and review other city manuals and return with recommendations. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Did council member Mobley, when she spoke to whoever today about not being here, did she mention whether she would want to serve on this or not?
Thank you, council member Johnson. Yes, she would like to be one of the ad hoc members if possible. I should have included that statement earlier. Yes, she would like to.
I figured she probably did, but one of the things that got lost in translation, so to speak, so.
Okay.
I would be willing to be the second person then, if that's all, you know, if that's what's needed, two people for an ad hoc committee.
I would also be willing, but does it matter if that, if you want to? Open public comment. Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
All this excitement?
Go ahead.
There were two council members that were willing to serve on this committee. Great.
Okay, so, that to you, you want to?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, do we need to make a motion on that?
It would be good to make a motion to appoint council member Johnson and council member Mobley to the ad hoc committee to review the policies and procedures manual.
I make a motion to authorize interim city manager and appoint two council members to participate in a policies and procedures manual review ad hoc committee.
Second.
Those two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, city managers report.
Okay, I'm ready. So some upcoming council meetings for you. Our next council meeting is November 4th at 6:00 PM, and the second meeting in November is November 18th at 6:00 PM. The next Planning Commission meeting on October 22nd has been canceled. The following Planning Commission meeting is November 12th at 6:00 PM. The next Measure E meeting is Tuesday, January 21st at 5:30. The RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting date is November 6th at 2:30 PM. And the next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting is tomorrow morning at 8:30 AM. And a couple of items that I'll focus on today, the, I had the pleasure of meeting with Wendell Freeman with the Bear, he's the Bear River Tribal Administrator, and I was bringing Wendell up to speed on the collaboration between the McLean Foundation and the RONER Community Recreation and Park District's plans to potentially build a community pool. And so that information was received well, and we were then able to meet with Wendell and additional Bear River staff and the McLean Foundation on October 17th to discuss ways that Bear River may be interested in partnering in the public pool project. They have a lot of administrative resources that I think could be very beneficial to the long-term operation of the public pool, and so that is exciting, and hopefully they will be at the next RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting on November 6th to continue that discussion. And then, in addition, myself and the community development director, Sherry Meads, we met with Go Biz, Go Biz's nine and the Tina to fine-tune our business presentation to any potential businesses that are coming into Fortuna. And so, we now have a lovely pamphlet, well, it's more than a pamphlet, it's almost a book of information on how great Fortuna is, and all of the tax information, tax credit information that's available through the state of California. And so, we were able to do that, and we were even able to share it with a potential business. So that was exciting. And then, of course, I'm always meeting with the city's departments and still enjoying every second of it. So that concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you. Okay, future gender, agenda items.
Can't think of anything right now.
I have a question on the city's website. It's not easy. It's not easy to find stuff on there, and there's a lot of outdated stuff on there. Do we have somebody that's dedicated to our website that updated or?
We're actually in the process of updating the website, and so that is a project that's in the works. We understand that it's got some difficult, difficulty navigating, so we're working on that.
Okay. And going through and updating, there's a lot of stuff that's out of date on there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. City council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. A few redact meetings have been canceled, but they just had a executive meeting today to go over some loans that needed to be closed in time, so we had that meeting, had a wonderful little lunch meeting. Other than that, like Mike said, the medians are looking great, the city's looking good, getting ready for that big rainy season's coming because we already got it, and my yard's already muddy, so welcome for the rain.
Okay. Mayor Protam Johnson?
A few things. I spent last week at the Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach, my old hometown, and it's a lot of changes in the last 70 years. But I attended one meeting that was very interesting on how to handle disruptive meetings. We don't usually have disruptive meetings, but I did get to see a demonstration of one, and no, it was not Dysfunction Junction, the old trainer that they throw up there. This was a completely new one. And it was interesting. Was served as a delegate, voting on a resolution that ironically was not able to go all the way through the process and go to the board as a resolution because it was eight votes short of a quorum. And almost was nine because I didn't know that they voted at 8:30 on Friday morning, but I did find out on Thursday, so I made it. But it will go as a- But it will go as a recommendation, and then they will, board will take it up and possibly pass it. But for those that serve on a body and have seen the state legislature working on things, the actual resolution that was going to, was, says that the California State Legislature shall not enact, and the governor shall not approve, any law or regulation that applies solely to elected officials of California cities and counties unless such law or regulation also applies equally to members of the California State Assembly and Senate after a reconciliation process has been completed. This prohibition shall not apply to laws or regulations affecting the inherent powers of the legislative branch to adopt matters of statewide concern within the meaning of Section 5 of Article 9 of the California Constitution. So, it was basically making a level playing field. So, that's what's going, going up to the Cal Cities Board. Outside of that, we, I serve on the Humboldt County Association of Governments Board, and we recently had our executive director resign and take the executive director position at Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And while I and another member of the Humboldt County Association of Governments Board from Arcata were down in Long Beach at this convention, we were both appointed in our absence to the ad hoc committee to find the new executive director. So, we have something to do now. So, in that case, we actually have our first meeting tomorrow to get started on it. And that's my reports for this time of week.
Thank you. Okay, I've been doing a lot of outreach meetings on Measure P, talking to individual people, answering a lot of questions. So, if anybody has any questions on Measure P, I'm happy to talk to anybody about that and educate you on that. I also had a meeting with the president of Public Relations for Providence. We meet periodically when he comes up here, he's in the Santa Rosa area. There's going to be some good things coming to Providence. They're trying to increase the Fortuna Hospital. They are bringing a stroke unit down here, so anybody in the county who has strokes will, will actually be sent to Fortuna instead of everything having to go to Eureka. They're trying to bring in a few more specialists. So, you know, that'd be nice if we can get some more medical down in this area and even into our county. So, that was interesting, talking to him about that. And I think that's all I have at this time. So, I guess, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, meeting adjourned.